It's very important for any school district to focus on the future success of the students who live in that district, whether that be entering a four-year college program, or a vocational school, going into the military, or going straight from high school into the workforce. So it's very important that the school focus on that. My vision for that would be increase community involvement with our students so that they have a tie to our community. As a business owner, I'm keenly aware that the students in our district today are our future workforce tomorrow. So it's very important that we set them up with all the tools that they need for success. Not only does that include strict academic achievement, but it's also going to include those soft skills like communication, being able to collaborate with other individuals, and also being able to continue to be a lifelong learner so that whether their future is here in Springfield or somewhere else, they can succeed and they can be an active participant of their community.
So the district uses the term strategic in the strategic plan of success-ready students. I believe that this term is very descriptive of what we're looking for. Not all paths necessarily lead to college or further education. Some paths lead to trades, some paths leads to entrepreneurship, some paths leads to college. And so there is a diverse path after SPS is done with them. So the first thing we can do for these kids is focus on the academics, academic excellence. Not only does the academics help them in whatever career choice they decide to make or further education, it also serves as a great way to teach these kiddos what it means to be accountable for actions, what it means to be working in a classroom setting, what it means to be working with others, what it means to be, you know, all the basic life skills. So I'm a big proponent of that particular part of the education system. That's why my kids still go to spring public schools is because I've got a high schooler, a middle schooler, and an elementary student. And so I love the fact that they're able to be in a group setting with their peers, with challenges, thinking through these obstacles. And I think that there's, you know, school, when I look back to what got me ready for the next level is the key thing. So we've got to focus on academics, we've got to focus on social, emotional, behavioral expectations as well. So there's a lot more to life than just passing a test. You've got to be able to work with your peers, you've got to have that social intelligence, you've got to have that emotional intelligence, you've got to understand how to behave. A lot of times, people kind of forget that the way that you behave with a group of your peers is also probably how you're going to continue to behave whenever you start getting jobs and working with teams and going down that path. So I think that if we focus on the core, the curriculum, the reading, the writing, the arithmetic, the academics, but also we have to understand that we have to develop these little humans into future leaders of our city.
I believe that the schools are the heart of the community. They would be the driver. We need to provide for our students the opportunity through career fairs, the Go Caps is an outstanding program, any type of internship information from the counselors, the teachers. When you graduate from high school, you have a diploma, and then you have umpteen roads available for you to go. Kids need some direction after they graduate to become that member in the community, that workforce development that's going to help lead them to a future in Springfield, we hope. There are lots of ways that we can get this information to kids, but it needs to be a priority. And all of our schools, including our middle schools, can help with directing kids toward a field of choice that best suits their abilities and wants.
SPS vision is that they are committed to the wellbeing of each student by providing high-quality academic opportunities. The board needs to ensure that students are academically successful, and they come out of high school and are college or career-ready. SPS must also engage and collaborate with the community. If you want to continue growing Springfield and want strong economic development, you need a strong public education system. SPS needs to be strong and collaborate with businesses to know what their needs are. The Healthcare Alliance is a great example of that. My fear is that if certain people are elected, that SPS will no longer participate in that alliance. Not participating in that alliance would be wrong. It's a great alliance for students come out of high school with an A A degree, their high school diploma, and a job. How can it get any better than that? So we need to continue to make sure that our students are strong academically, and we need to collaborate and engage the community.
I think SPS has a crucial role in preparing our young folks for the future workforce. You know, schools have a traditional role of teaching, reading, writing, arithmetic, critical thinking, appreciation for diverse perspectives, appreciation for diverse cultures, but they also reinforce things that our parents teach us, things like academic integrity and responsibility, honesty, punctuality. These are all things that I think are really important for any worker, no matter what the industry they end up going into. So in terms of what the vision looks like, I would say it's, you know, schools are already doing this, so I think it's a matter of strengthening those types of programs that are instilling in every single child, regardless of their background, the things that schools are supposed to instill, right? Again, the things that I previously listed. So I would say that's my vision. They certainly are important, which is why I think it's important for the district to have multiple stakeholders, not only parents, teachers, but also business leaders who will be looking to fill those roles with competent, holistically trained people.
My vision for the district in developing the workforce, I look at it in five categories, which I call the five S's. It's going to, those would be, it would be support for teachers, solutions for the district, spending, safety, and last but not least, following the strategic plan set out by the district over the last year. So within each one of those categories, I think it's important that we always keep in mind that we're trying to produce success-ready students. And with that, I want them to be prepared for when they come, either go out to college or if they're going to go into the business field. And a lot of those things are going to include making the classroom safe, making the district safe, supporting teachers, and then following the strategic plan, and then spending money wisely to get best results.
I think the district needs to stay on its toes in terms of up-and-coming careers and what's on the horizon. We have to continue investing in technology and advancing those careers and making sure that our students have the skills that are necessary. And that goes beyond providing computers. Students, children are digitally savvy more and more every year. We have to be able to give them the skills that they need to be able to advance in those fields. In order to do that, and alongside that, we also need to focus on the fundamentals, and that's the fundamentals in verbal and written communication. We have to make sure that our students have strong skills when it comes to mathematics and sciences. All of those are necessary alongside, and also character building and those soft skills of being able to communicate both verbally and written, and be able to develop the sorts of work ethics, a pride in their success, so that they have grit, so that they can move forward and be a productive member of the society. So not only do we need to ensure that we are there with the academic performance piece, that we're also there with character building. We want to have a capable workforce, but we want to have a workforce that is going to endure. In order to do that, we have to make sure that we're looking ahead as to what is up and coming, and that we prepare our students academically and in terms of their work ethic and what they can bring. Because if individuals, if our students can succeed, if they are success-ready, then the community will succeed and the workforce will move forward. The entire business community will rise. A rising tide will rise all boats. We do the best we can for students, and that will have return on the investments we will get from student achievement.
When making decisions on the board, I consider all stakeholders. As a community member, I know it's important to have strong public schools. So not only do we want to listen to the parents and guardians, we also want to listen to the students who are in those schools, we want to listen to the business community in Springfield, and just also residents who live in our community. We also want to listen to the educators and the teachers who are boots-on-the-ground in our school. So it's important that I listen to all key stakeholders. I also listen to other members of my board because they bring unique qualities to the board that I may not bring. So it's important that we're collaborating together when we're making decisions. Ultimately, I also look to the superintendent and her team because she is the expert in many of these items, but I want to listen to the community to see if there's continuing themes that we're seeing at the board level that we need to address at that board table.
Yeah, so the stakeholders that are, you know, obviously in consideration is, the first stakeholder is obviously the kids. Every decision that you make has got to help these children do better in their academics, period. If it takes away from the academic excellence, takes away from the academic achievement, we need to strongly consider if that should be in our schools or not. Also, the teachers as well. I believe that all parts of the school district, from the board to the administration to the site leadership, to the support staff on the actual site as well, is really and should be built to serve the teachers. The teachers are the ones that went into debt to serve our community, they're the ones that are putting their life on the line, unfortunately, in our schools lately to teach these kids the academics, the reading, the writing, the arithmetic, the ABCs and the 1-2-3s. And so the teachers are absolutely paramount. That is the front lines of education. They're the ones that are implementing all the education that everything else is sort of built to support. So that's super important. Obviously, the parents need to have complete communication and that they're a stakeholder with their kids. They're the ones that are ultimately going to decide to keep their kids in our district or take them to private schools or take them out of our district. So that's obviously an important stakeholder. And then the community at large. We've got to understand there's 24,500 students coming out of SPS, or I'm sorry, that are in SPS currently. These are the future leaders, the future accountants, the future tradesmen, the future tradeswomen, the future entrepreneurs, everything. So having them with a clear path of what is that next step, whether it be a trade, a trade sort of apprenticeship, whether it be furthering their education, whether it just be a job simply, these individuals, we want them to stay in our community and produce and use their skills to make Springfield awesome. That's what I did when I graduated from Kekapu. I went to Missouri State and I started multiple companies over the last several years, and that's, you know, SPS had a lot to do with that.
The stakeholders that we need to address is the community. We need information from the students. Who knows the students better? The teachers, the administration, the counselors, meaningful adults. Once we talk about the school, then we're talking about the neighborhood, the neighborhood associations, the PTA meetings. Anyone that has insight would be, in my opinion, would be a stakeholder. A stakeholder would have an opinion. I'm sure they are only interested in the best interest of the child. So when they're passionate and they want to bring that opinion to someone who would listen, that's important. I consider myself a good listener. I consider myself trustworthy. I'm a people person. I love getting together with the Springfield community and talking about all the good things that are available to our future. I've always thought that maybe the best way to thank someone for something that they've done, something that they've given to you, the best way to thank someone is to do something for their child. So that's another reason that I feel very important about this election and what we can do for our Springfield students.
Yeah, my question is, it depends. It depends on what we're trying to decide. If it has to do with teachers or staff, for example, their contract, we need to take into account that we need to attract and retain high-quality teachers and staff. So we need to ensure that we're attracting and retaining high-quality staff, and we need to be an advocate for all students and the taxpayers. I will strengthen engagement, listen to the community, and I will be an advocate for our students and advocate, strong watchdog for our taxpayers.
There are several stakeholders I think it's important to wrap in when making decisions that are important to the district. There are the usual suspects, like parents and teachers. Parents, because they have obviously vested interests in making sure that their child is learning what they need to learn to prepare them for future challenges and lifelong success. Teachers, obviously, because they are the ones in the trenches doing the work of educating young people. And so any decision that is made at the district level, I think there needs to be buy-in and open communication with our teachers. I'm really proud to be endorsed by the SNA Teachers Union, and I think part of that's because I am an educator and understand the importance of making sure that teachers are at the table when these decisions are being made. And then you also have your unusual suspects, business leaders. As I mentioned before, districts has a really strong role in developing a future workforce. And I think it's really important to be in collaboration and open dialogue to what business leaders are needing so that they can actually have a well-trained and equipped population to draw from when they are looking for employees. Also, labors. I also endorse by the Teamsters and the Central Labor Council, and it's because I believe that our labors also deserve a seat at the table when we're making important decisions like bonds and facilities and maintenance. And so I would say those stakeholders, I think, and frankly, anyone who's interested in public schools because it is a public good. So I think it's important for individuals who may not be parents or teachers or any of the traditional folks I just listed, who are also really interested. Because I think when you're submitting your public dollar to the government, there needs to be accountability, and so they need to have a seat at the table as well.
So when I talk to stakeholders and I'm going to consider decisions that I'm going to make on the board, I make everything in mind with students in mind because they're what we're here for, is to educate them. And when I think about what's going to affect students, I think about teachers, I think about parents. You want to talk about the community with the business leaders, and then you want to also look at anyone that may be involved outside of that that has a direct impact on our school system. And when I talk to stakeholders, I'm going to be a representative for them, and that's my job on the board. So speaking with teachers, speaking with administration, and speaking with parents and bringing their thoughts and their ideas to every decision I make is going to be important for moving the district forward.
The stakeholders that I consider always, every day at the forefront of every decision are the students. My concern is for the students, their first and foremost every time. I cannot emphasize that enough. And for that, they need a learning environment that allows them to grow, to develop, and to learn. I'm going to say that again. The stakeholders that matter the most to me are the students. Within that context, the teachers, the parents, and the community at large. But I come back always to the students. It's about what the students need, not the perception of what they need, not what the students want, not what somebody somewhere else wants. It's what the students need. That is a very fundamental distinction that needs to be made. What do they need to develop? What do they need to learn?
I am running for reelection because I love Springfield. I moved here intentionally. This is my chosen home, and I want to make sure that my chosen home continues to succeed. When I first ran in 2021, I was serving on the Springfield Public School Foundation Board, and I knew that I could make a bigger difference on the Board of Education. I've served in that role now for three years. I currently serve as Board President, and I know I can make a bigger impact in the upcoming term. Our board is also very young as far as terms are concerned. We only have one board member who's served more than one term. That's Dr. Sharita Thomas Tate, who's finishing up her fourth year. I think it's important to have some consistency on the board, and that's another reason that I'm running for reelection.
It's going to be difficult to summarize why I'm running and what my experiences are in one minute, but I'll try my best. I think the most important credential that I have is I'm a proven entrepreneur and a proven businessman. I graduated from a degree in marketing at Missouri State University. I currently serve on the advisory board for the Marketing Department of Missouri State University. I am a successful business owner. I have been building and selling companies for the last 15 years. I just went through a recent exit about nine months ago with a very successful exit as well. And so my entrepreneurial abilities of being able to understand challenges, form a team to be able to execute what that challenge is, and provide results is paramount. I've proven that track record. My last company had about 50 employees. We were a nationwide known company. In my particular niche that I was in, I was the largest advertising agency in the particular niche that I was serving. So I had 50 employees to execute that dream in Springfield, and many times that I have to use all that team to execute the vision and the goals.
I have always been involved with kids, either in the classroom or in sports. I have been involved in their lives to find what was meaningful, what I could engage them in with learning. Every activity, every job, every lesson is something that they learn. I feel that our kids, our students nowadays, they need to take on this responsibility to move forward, they need the self-confidence to make great decisions, and I feel that I'm uniquely qualified. I've been a teacher all my life. The SPS Foundation honored me with the Hall of Fame induction, and that was an honor to represent educators. Educators change lives. Futures change destinies.
I love Springfield, and I'm proud to raise my daughter in the community. My wife and I have always been involved in their education, and I have a passion for public education. I ran for the school board in 2021 and got elected. Now I want to see that job through. If reelected, I will continue to listen to the teachers, parents, and advocate for both. My nearly three years of experience thus far in the SPS Board of Education better qualifies me to represent the diverse needs of SPS stakeholders. Since my election in April 2021, I've worked with the new superintendent, provided input to our initial entry plans. I was one of the board liaisons on the Community Task Force Facilities, and I helped update this five-year strategic plan. I just want to continue to see this through and use my experience in construction management, budgeting, and project management to help SPS.
I'm running for one reason, and that is I am a champion for public schools. I believe that our public schools have the awesome power to transform lives, and I'm living testament of that. I grew up as a child of a single mom, paycheck to paycheck, and my mom poured into me the value of education, and now I'm here as a professor, living the American dream, as it were. And increasingly, I feel that access to a quality education is not provided to all of our children. I want to ensure that we have that same transformative power accessible to all children. In terms of what I bring that qualifies me and makes me willing to serve, I think the most important thing is I'm an educator. I know what it's like to be in the classroom, I know what it's like to deal with some of these issues, I am familiar with education policy, but also I know what it means to be serving on a board. I serve on the Missouri Foundation for Health Board. It's a multi-million-dollar, billion-dollar organization, so I know what it means to oversee one employee.
I'm running for the Board of Education because I've got seven kids, I've got 15 years of experience as a parent in SPS. I've lived here all my life, I have invested interest in making our community good. And some of the things that I've done over the past years, I'm a professional, I have a degree in pharmacy as a doctor of pharmacy, I've served as a chapter director for a fraternity at MSU and ran board meetings for them, teaching young men how to run a board meeting and come together for one common cause. I've also taught students as an educator, as a preceptor for UMKC on their last year of rotation. And then I've also worked on the UMKC Board of Admissions. So with all those things in mind, and then the health, and I do a lot through fitness to help kids and help adults take back their life, I feel like I'm a good example through my actions to help on the school board.
I'm running to get reelected to my seat because of the kids. Because I want to improve the life circumstances of children in the Springfield area. It's always about the kids. I bring a unique perspective. I've been a very effective board member in implementing change in a positive direction. I bring a strength, which is I'm willing to own it, and I'm willing to make the tough decisions to move forward. And part of that is an absolute belief that it can be done. It doesn't matter to me that other districts and other states are struggling. What matters is what happens in our schools, and I think that we control that. We control the culture, the climate, and the achievement of our students. I absolutely believe that it can be done. That is my intent.
Back in 2022, the Board of Education spent quite a lot of time developing its new strategic plan. And if you go back and watch those videos, you will see that there were multiple times that the seven of us had very strong disagreements about what was going to be placed in that strategic plan. I'm proud that that strategic plan passed with a 7-0 vote and that we were able to reach a consensus. And part of that was being able to listen to one another with open minds and looking at, okay, why is another board member coming to us with a certain proposal that I may disagree with, and how can we reach common ground? And we did reach common ground, and you saw that with a 7-0 vote.
Yeah, so as an entrepreneur, this has happened often because I had 50 employees, and my leadership team at my last company was about seven actual leaders. We had, what they called them, I called them directors. I was at that table and I had directors, there were seven of us. I was in that meeting as a voting member, as the way that I structured it. So just because Landon McCarter wanted to do a certain thing didn't mean that my staff, who I had trusted to lead other individuals under them, thought that that was the best move. And so there was many, many, many times where I defaulted to a plan or a strategy or a challenge, sort of a solution to a challenge that my team brought up that was different than mine. I had a very diverse leadership team as well. We had older individuals, we had younger individuals, we had many different backgrounds, et cetera. So this happened all the time, and it really honestly turned out to be the best way to govern my company and really led to amazing results, is Landon McCarter isn't always right, and when he's not right, then I can submit to what the team sort of wants to do.
I had a hard time thinking of a time where I was just really involved in a very strong difference. I think if you end up in a situation and people are on different sides, you need to define the problem. You need to back up, and you need to clearly define the problem. When you define the problem, then you can list solutions. When you list the solutions, you can narrow it down. What will work, what might not work as well, what two steps do you need to solve the problem? But you've got to be able to collaborate, you've got to be able to give and take, it's kind of like a partnership. You've got to come to a situation where both sides win. A partnership, when both sides move forward, they have a win to take back. And our school board, our schools, our society, we need a lot of partnerships, we need win-win situations.
There have been several incidents, examples I can come up with where there's been a strong differences of opinion, and we've worked to find a solution. And I'll tell you, a lot of people have turned to me because I collaborate well with the whole board, no matter where they sit, at the table, their position on things. I am very comfortable calling them up, talking to them, talking through their thoughts, and me providing them details on where I stand with things. And in the end, collaborating together to do what's right for SPS and the students of Springfield Public Schools.
I had the honor and privilege of serving on the district's Discipline Review Board in 2022. And during that time, there was a discussion about the inequities that we saw in discipline rates between students of color and nonstudents. And there were a lot of conversations about whether it's poverty that explains this disparity or if it's race. And there's a back and forth, people kind of bringing their own previous perspectives and ideologies. perspectives and ideologies. And I just said, well, what does the data say? What does the data say? And so we requested the data. We got some cross tabs to look at race and also looked at free and reduced lunch, which is a proxy for class. And lo and behold, we found out it's both. Both race and class shape these experiences. So bottom line, I think for me, my approach to everything is I'm a data-driven guy. I'm a researcher, so when I try to make a decision, I don't rely on my ideology. I rely on what the data says. And I think we'd need more people who are willing to have data-driven solutions, because I think that's the way that we bridge these ideological divides.
So throughout my life, I've always been chosen to be a leader of everything I've done. For this example of where we've had two opinions coming together, when I was chapter director of fraternity at MSU, we had quite a divide right down the middle on a couple of subjects. Without going too into the details, I was able to direct those two groups to come together when times looked bad and they said, well, if we don't get our way, we'll just walk away. And I showed them what the final, what we were all trying to get to, the final outcome. And with that in mind, taught these young men how to come together, how to follow each other example, how to, you know, kind of agree to disagree. And then for the final solution, I think that's something we need on our board right now.
A recent example happened last week. It's no secret that I have had some criticism of the current mathematics curriculum. And I had an opportunity to visit with, in my role as a citizen, with somebody who is perhaps the biggest proponent of said curriculum. And I had an opportunity to practice this and learn about it, implement it. I tutor students at an elementary school. I use that, the tenants of that curriculum. And so we had an opportunity to really visit about it. And during this course, and this wasn't something short, but this was extensive, we both, what was incredible is that we both walked away in complete agreement on the pros and cons of said curriculum, on why it works and why it doesn't work. And it's going to change my perspective moving forward, and I know that it's going to change the perspective of this individual moving forward when we next have to have a discussion about this subject matter.
At SPS, we're constantly seeing improvements. We're always looking to academic achievement as an area that can be improved, and you'll see that we're continuing to improve our academic achievement with additional tools that are being used by the district to monitor that achievement. As part of that, one of the things that SPS does very well is work with community organizations to set our students up for success. And you saw that with the recent Healthcare Alliance, where we are working with our healthcare providers and also our colleges here in Springfield to set our students up for success. You also see that with the Ag Academy that was recently open, giving students an alternative way to learn. When a student is learning, just like when any one of us is learning, if we're interested in the material, we are going to take a vested interest in learning that material. So for example, with our Ag Academy, for example, or our Wolf School that's at Bass Pro, when you have students who are interested in, say, outdoors, if you can weave in their math curriculum and their reading curriculum within that outdoor curriculum, you'll see that they'll have increased academic achievement, and that's something that SPS has done very well and continues to do well.
So luckily, I am a parent of three SPS kids and have been for the last 14 years now. Well, I guess that's more like nine years, because my oldest is getting ready to be a freshman at Kickapoo. Next year, I'll have a freshman at Kickapoo. I'll have a middle schooler, and I'll have an elementary. I have noticed a marked difference in the communication to parents of what's going on in the schools with my kids. So, you know, anybody that sort of communicates to me in the community that tells me that parents or schools need to do a better job communicating with parents, I'm saying, well, all the emails going to your spam? Because there's almost so many emails and communication points that I get from my kids that I almost can't even read them all. In the beginning, when I first had, you know, my kiddos, that communication wasn't quite there. I've seen a marked difference in increasing communication as a parent. I feel very well informed of what's going on. I also like the fact that when my son, as an example, has an assignment that's greatly affecting his grade, I know that immediately. My wife and I can solve that problem, and that problem is solved immediately. When it comes to what I think the district can do better, it is obvious that we have a behavioral and discipline issue in SPS. For whatever reason, we have allowed this sort of creep of acceptance of lack of excellence from a behavior and disciplinary standpoint. Our classrooms are even potentially becoming unsafe and crossing the line from just disruption to unsafe. There was a teachers' union sort of march that was taught, that all they wanted was safe classrooms. I was there. Next year, I don't know if those that may not be aware, we actually have a budget for, like, riot shields in our classroom. I feel like once we are starting to get riot shields for our classrooms in SPS, we've crossed a critical point of, like, just common sense. We obviously have an issue with behavior and discipline. We've got to address that. We've got to figure that out. We've got to figure out why the administration and the teachers feel like their hands are tied to do what's needed to bring order to the classroom. The behavior and the lack of consequences is out of control.
One of the things that they've done very well is they've had the community support to pass the bond issues. We have old buildings that need to be replaced. We need to replace those buildings. Some can be remodeled, but some need to be replaced. I was excited to hear that when they were going to replace Reed, they were going to save all the old wood and put it into the ceiling to make sure that you had some part of history back. I understand it's tough to lose history, but there are many times that we have to need, we need to look for the future, not what's best for the student today. We need to look what's best for the student today and the years to come. Building, replacing, and building some great schools in the heart of Springfield really will encourage those students and their families to attend in there. We don't want a student thinking they have to go to an old rundown school when their neighboring school is so much newer, so much, has so many other facilities. We don't build buildings for today and tomorrow. We're building schools for the future generations, the next generation, and that's been, that has been something great. What we need to work on is we need to work on retaining great teachers and great staff. We are at a teacher shortage, a staff shortage, shortage of bus drivers. We need quality people that we can retain, and we know that salaries and benefits help, but we need to work, we need to look at the working relationships as well.
One thing that SPS has done well is their building, and, you know, they got a bond passed in 2019, and I think that they successfully built these buildings where, and did it in such a way where it saved the taxpayers' money, and they were able to do additional projects because they had so much savings. And I was on the community task force as a board liaison in 2022, where we went and looked at all the facilities and looked at their needs, and from that made recommendations to the board. The board looked at the recommendations, agreed with them, and then we went out to the taxpayers for another no-tax, increased bond levy, and that was successfully passed, overwhelmingly passed. That was a great thing that they've done. So, and they've been good stewards of the taxpayers' money with that. But one thing that can be improved is discipline. We have a discipline plan in place, but we need to ensure that it's consistently being followed in the buildings. And we need to hold teachers, not teachers, we need to hold students and parents accountable so they know that violence will not be tolerated in SPS. Safety and security has to be our top priority.
If I were limited to one thing the district has done well, what I have been appreciative of are efforts to kind of demystify what SPS is. And so we've seen the SPS ambassadors program, which brings in, you know, stakeholders to, you know, get a better sense of the district. We've also seen Dr. Lathan's SPS University, which is designed to get parents more engaged and involved. And so I think those are really great first steps at increasing this transparency and communication between, you know, various stakeholders. It's not perfect. I mean, oftentimes, the parents are able to get involved with SPS University are already those who have the resources to be able to take off work, et cetera. So there are some challenges there, but it's a good first step. In terms of a challenge or things that could be approved upon, I think for me, the district's going to be making a lot of very important decisions, right? How do we deal with discipline? The closure of Roberson and the elementary school portion of Pershing were real reminders that the district makes really important decisions that impact lives. And one thing that I think we need to reestablish is trust. There is a lack of trust between teachers and the teachers and the administration, teachers in the board. There's a lack of trust between our labor, you know, contractors and the district. We need to rebuild that because we're going to be continuing to make really difficult decisions. COVID money is going to run out, and so we're going to be on a tightened budget. We have to make difficult decisions on how we're going to move forward. We cannot make any of those decisions unless we really rebuild that trust of the community. It's a long journey to do that. It's really difficult to build trust, but the first step is to acknowledge there is a breakdown and work on ways to increase that transparency and that collaboration to build that trust back up.
And one thing I think the district's done really well over the last five years is the community engagement. As a parent of seven kids of SPS, constantly getting emails or, you know, direct information from the school, from the superintendent, from principals, from teachers, there's great communication between the schools and parents as far as things that we can get involved in and community outreach to businesses and things like that, different events that people can get involved. And it really comes down to community because we're all here together for the, for these students to, you know, make them successful. As far as a couple of things, well, you said one thing that you, that maybe we could do better. I think right now, one of the major topics is school safety and discipline, and I'd like to see some things that be addressed there, maybe putting a resource officer in each school to help with discipline and then really looking at the discipline policy and making sure that we're holding these kids accountable for their actions and helping these teachers. That's the, that's the point. Part of the strategic plan is to have a quality learning environment where kids can be success-ready students, and without that quality learning environment and the discipline to do so, we can't, we can't, we're not going to move forward. Another thing that is affecting that situation is, could be cell phones or technology in the classroom, and I'd like to see that looked at as well. So hopefully, we can look at safety, make our schools safe, and help our teachers and our students.
We've done a lot of things well. You asked me to pick one. We've done a really great job of partnering with so many institutions. We've partnered with businesses. We've partnered with nonprofit organizations. We've partnered with higher educational institutions, and they come with so much value. And I think it goes both ways. We get a lot of, there's tremendous value for our students, such an investment into our students. It helps provide choices for our students. It provides support for our families. It has been invaluable, and we need to continue it. We need to expand it. We need to applaud it. We need to celebrate it. What an achievement. And now I have to, something we're not perhaps achieving as well as I'd like to see or as we'd like to see is partnership with the home and partnership with the families. This is something that started to get a bit shaky with introduction of technology. What a powerful tool. We absolutely need our students to learn about it and to become proficient, but it did break a link with the communication with the home. And then COVID came along, and it further weakened that bond. This is something that we need to continue working on because it pays tremendously. Our biggest partners are the parents and the guardians and the grandparents in the home. And this is something that I intend to focus on because I know that it will help us move the needle. It will help us help our students achieve, both in terms of academic success and also in terms of character achievement, not just their academic performance, but their social performance, their emotional, their emotional stability and happiness depends on the partnerships that we can develop with the home environment.
As a public school, we also have a fiduciary responsibility to be fiscally responsible because ultimately, we're being run with taxpayer dollars. You'll see in our master facilities plan that we have set up certain times when we are going to reassess if we need a new air conditioning in a school, if we need a new bus in our school. And so that ensures that we're not hit with a particular year where we're needing to spend tons of money. Now, we also have some very, very old buildings in our district, and those, thankfully, due to the bond, which was passed with overwhelming success, are going to be able to be updated so that the students who are in our district are given the facilities that they deserve.
Yeah, so this is a very easy question to answer, in my opinion, because the community has just voted on another bond. That's going to be almost $200 million to go towards exactly this. So the board has a fiduciary duty to steward that fund, those funds well. Luckily, this is our second phase of the actual bond. We've had millions of dollars go through prior. And the first thing I'll say is we must keep that money local. We must use local Springfield businesses. We must give Springfield businesses the opportunity to bid on every single dollar of that project. The only time we come out of our community to get jobs done for that money is if we don't have the resources in Springfield to get it done. Also, this is the second time of the bond, so the first phase of the bond was on time and under budgets. We were able to knock out multiple additional sites with the existing first round of the budget. So obviously, the subcontractors and the individuals that worked on the first phase of the bond did a great job, and they needed first right to take that job again.
I understand that taking care of the public's money is a great responsibility, should not be taken lightly. I feel very strongly that when we can, that we should do local. I believe in the importance of turning the dollar over in the economy. I believe that is one way that we can build trust between the taxpayers and the school district, that we use your money, we use it locally, we turn the dollar back over. But financial decisions are very important, particularly when you know that the budget is tight and your top, one of your priorities is maintaining those great teachers. So it's a tough decision, but it can be done, and it can be done well.
To be equitable and responsible for our aging buildings, we need to come up with a, what we call, where I work, a long-term maintenance plan, a long-term facility plan, and make sure that that's followed. And we need to make sure that we are responsible with our taxpayers' dollars when we are building these new buildings. I recommend it's hiring a consultant to oversee the architect and engineer's work.
I think the accountability of taxpayers is one of the most important duties of the board, right? We're elected by the public. Their public dollars or their taxpayer dollars go to maintaining our public schools, and so we want to ensure that we are using their dollars in the best way possible. As mentioned before, difficult decisions need to be made about buildings, right? Whether to maintain and update Roberson versus closing it. I think what I would say when thinking about what is the most equitable way to deal with these questions, that's where data comes into play, right? I know that we relied heavily on a demographic analysis when thinking about what to do when it came to Pershing and Roberson. But I also know that there was another piece of data that wasn't, I think, in my view, taken too seriously, and that was the qualitative data. We've had hearings, we've had town halls, but I think elevating those qualitative, those stories are really important to make sure that we're making a decision that not only fits the qualitative data, but also engages the community and instills trust.
Right, so our district is large. We have a lot of buildings, and some of them are, you know, are old and need help. We just passed the bond, which is going to help with that, with, you know, some major areas. But just being transparent, you know, with the community, with businesses, I think there's a need to make sure that the taxpayer dollars stay in Missouri and Springfield. So when we can, we need to use local companies. So when we can, we need to use local companies, not look outside the state, and make sure that those companies have correct training and certificates and things like that so we're getting the best results we can for the money we're spending from these taxpayers.
Our strength comes in our size, but it also means that we have a lot of buildings, and many of them are aging. I believe the way to move forward is to have a long-range plan, which means that, and I know the question is about aging buildings, but we're building new buildings. And it's important to make sure that they age with the most longevity that is possible. So we need to invest in responsible and effective and efficient buildings that we are building. So that goes into that plan as well. But in terms of our aging buildings, we have to ensure that we invest into those buildings again so that we can have buildings that are long-lasting and that perform well and that are nurturing environments, that they remain safe environments for our students. And part of that is not just having a short-term plan, but having all the pieces in there for a long-range plan as we look at our budgetary construction.